All right, we'll call this meeting to order for the closed session of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is straight up five o'clock. Madam Clerk, call ball please.
Councilmember Bieber.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Proton Menable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments today.
Okay, so with that, we will move into closed session, and the time is still five o'clock.
Thank you.
I'll call this meeting to order. The regular city council meeting and successor agency housing authority meeting for February 10th, 2025. Current time is six eight, six oh eight, sorry. At this time, we all do our invocation. It'll be Pastor Joel. And then right after that, we have our pledge of legions done by our captains. So if you all rise please, pastor.
Gracious heavenly father, we give thanks to you. As Psalm 105 says, "We call upon your name; we make known your deeds among the peoples." We talk of your wondrous works. We give you all glory. This evening, as the city council meets, we pray for your guidance and blessing on all the decisions made here. We pray for each council member, Mayor John Thorpe, Mayor Pro Tem Chris Venable, Justin Bieber, Bob Miller, and Judy Woolsey. For unity in thought and creative ideas. We pray for your direction in all that the city does and that you will be honored. We ask you to bless Ucaipa. We pray in the name of Jesus the Christ, the son of God, amen.
Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no divisions or faults.
Call this meeting to order. The regular city council meeting and successor agency housing authority meeting for February 10th, 2025, current time is six eight, 6:08, sorry. At this time, we all do our invocation. It'll be Pastor Joel. And then right after that, we have our pledge of legions done by our captain. So if you all rise, please. Pastor?
Gracious heavenly father, we give thanks to you. As Psalm 105 says, "We call upon your name; we make known your deeds among the peoples. We talk of your wondrous works; we give you all glory." This evening, as the city council meets, we pray for your guidance and blessing on all the decisions made here. We pray for each council member, Mayor John Thorpe, Mayor Pro Tem Chris Venable, Justin Beaver, Bob Miller, and Judy Woolsey, for unity in thought and creative ideas. We pray for your direction in all that the city does and that you will be honored. We ask you to bless Ukaypa. We pray in the name of Jesus the Christ, the son of God. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please place your hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready to begin?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no human justice or fault.
Thank you pastor and thank you captain. Madam clerk, would you mind calling a roll, please?
Councilmember Beaver?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable?
Here.
Mayor Thorpe?
Here.
All present.
Okay. Report from closed session, we didn't finish, so we will be reconvening with that after this meeting. Next, moving on to any changes, city manager to the agenda?
No changes, sir.
I'm sorry? City manager, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, sir.
No changes, okay. Moving on to our special presentations, and we have quite a few tonight, so we'll start off with Yaps, dog of the month.
Okay, hello. This is Sushi, and she is our pet of the month. She is a one-year-old pug, and she just was rescued from San Bernardino City Shelter, and she was spayed last week. She is ready for a new home. I know we've got a couple of applications for her, and we'll be going over those this week, so there's still time. If you're interested in adopting Sushi, she is available on our website. Oh, she would, yes, she would like to say something on her own behalf. Sushi and I have a couple of announcements. Today is our founder's birthday, Betty Martinez, and so this makes 68 years since she founded Yaps. And so we're really happy to be over there in our little corner on three acres of property, and luckily, you know, we've been very successful with grants and donations and volunteers. Sushi's getting a little excited. Might be her, might be her dinnertime. So we've been really happy over there. We've been super excited and able to expand our property a little bit with, expand our footprint inside the property for adoptions of animals. We received a grant for a cattery from UC Davis, and we're building additional space for kitten season. So because it's so warm down here, we've got a couple kitten seasons, one in the spring and one in the fall, and now we'll be able to take nursing mothers and newborn kittens there. The second announcement I wanted to make is we had a puppy party this last Saturday. We had 30 puppies. 10 were able to be adopted or went into foster care to adoption. And then we also invited a couple other rescues, Right Fit Rescue and Spotted Dog Rescue, and together they got another 10 adoptions of dogs and cats. So all in all, Saturday, 20 animals found a new safe home. And then I wanted to mention a couple events that are, that are coming up. One is Homeward Bound, and that will be coming up May 17th. While we're on our property, we will have additional rescues able out there and able to adopt and get animals into foster care at our event. And then finally, we're dedicating a space on the property to a Rainbow Bridge Memorial Garden for animals that have passed, that we've loved and have shared our lives with, and people will be able to bring their collars and tags, or maybe a stepping stone as a memorial for their pet there on our property. So if you're interested, we're open Wednesday through Saturday from 12 to 4. You're welcome to come out and pet any of the animals. We're always looking for volunteers, anywhere from 14 and up on their own. And for kids, we have a reading program where they can come and read to the animals.
Well, thank you very much. We'll take a picture with your pup down here in the well, and then we'll, we'll stay down there because we have a lot of other presentations to follow this one.
Come on, Sushi.
Okay, next, we are going to have a special presentation by Fermine for Take a Hike.
Good evening, mayor and council members. If I can invite John and Debbie Perez to join me up here, please? And while they're coming down, just to provide some background, for several years, the City's Trails and Open Space Committee has coordinated and led the Take a Hike program. As you know, that program includes monthly hikes on public trails throughout the city. Years ago, John and Debbie Perez adopted the Grape Street Trail as part of the Adopted Trail Program, and this is where they heard about the Take a Hike program and the monthly hikes, and they participated in one, one of those hikes, and after that, they never looked back. John was born and raised in Ukaypa, grew up exploring and running the city's hills and trails. Debbie grew up in the LA area and moved to the inland empire when she attended the University of Redlands. They met in 1986, got married in 1989, and then purchased a home here in Ukaypa shortly after that. They raised two children in Ukaypa and have been very involved in the recreational activities and remain very active hiking the trails throughout the city, and specifically the Grape Street Trail and the connected Crafton Hills Trail. John and Debbie have participated in the monthly Take a Hike program for many years. The Trails and Open Space Committee, they recognize the frequent hikers as part of that, that program, and the Perez's were the first ones to earn the Super Hiker Award by completing their 48, their 48th hike. And what's even more impressive, they recently completed their 61st hike, and they plan to continue to do more. So we're, as, you know, we talk about the city's extensive multi-use trail system. We're very proud to have that system here in the city, and we're also proud of them for their impressive participation in the Take a Hike program, and we wish them the best of luck moving forward. So I'd like to invite the Perez's to say a few words if they'd like.
Thank you. I'm not very good with microphones, but we just want to thank the city of Ukaypa for, for offering the programs that you do offer. We just happen to like the Take a Hike one. We've always tried to be active. We especially like that it takes from the littles in utero, all the way to the, the senior citizens, which we're kind of there, but you know, even older. It's, it's good levels for everybody. The paces are good. They make options sometimes where you can go a little bit farther if you want to, go a little bit shorter. Christine, Candy, the crew, they've been very welcoming. They make it a point to know people's names, to recognize people when they're not there, to ask about the family, ask what's going on. It's kind of like its own little community. So we noticed, like the other day, I noticed somebody hasn't been there, so I had asked Christine, well, where's so-and-so, is she okay? You know, and she was fine, she just had other things to do. But it is a nice little community. You get to know who's there, you make network, you network with people. And like I said, it's been very welcoming. I think, I don't have my hat. Christine asks me every time, where's my hat? Because I don't wear hats, really. But, but I am proud of it. And yeah, we just, we're very thankful for that. It gives people to know, oh, and the most important thing is the tidbits of information that we get on the hikes. It's not just walking. We learn about the wells and the water systems and the trees and the wildlife and the flora, and it's educational as well. So we've learned a lot about our city, even when John, growing up here, we've learned a lot of things that we didn't know. So, thank you.
Thanks. Perfect. Next up, we have Superintendent Kelly Banks. She is going to present an award to somebody or a recognition.
Good evening, mayor, honorable counsel, and everyone in the community, and of course, my friends at the city staff. We're happy to be here tonight, but I'm going to start with a little brief commercial. Megan Wolf and I have been talking about celebrating our crossing guards, and actually, the Crossing Guard Celebration Day was on February 7th, but it's never too late to appreciate people's. So nine of our crossing guards, we want to prepare something for them. We're working on those baskets, and we want to extend an opportunity for the council to come. We're going to get a schedule together. You could go as early as 6:00 in the morning and as late as 3:30 in the afternoon, but if you'd like to join us as we go out and hand out some goodies to our crossing guards, we'd love to have you. So Megan will get that schedule, right, Megan?
Right, thank you for that. But this evening, we're actually here to honor Captain Walker. We're really excited. Captain Walker joined Matthew Vega, who's a captain for the Cala Mesa Fire Department, along with Lance Bradley, who's our Public Information and Communications Specialist and former school board member, now council member, Bob Miller, to present at the annual statewide California School Boards Association on December 5th. And in that conference, there were about 4,000 attendees, and our room was like, it wasn't sold out because you didn't have to, you already paid your fee to get in, but it was packed. People's standing room only, and it was an opportunity for us to highlight the partnerships that we have, not only with the city of Ukaypa, but also with the city of Cala Mesa, and how law enforcement and fire work together to support the work that they do in the city and the school district to help make sure that our children are always safe. And so we had the opportunity to do a presentation. It was about an hour and a half long, and while I know Captain Walker to be a very strong leader, he's often soft-spoken, and I've never seen him as animated as he was when he presented in front of the school board. It was amazing. He did such a great job, and he represented not only the sheriff's department well, but of course, the city of Ukaypa. And his knowledge and his ability to connect with school board members and their responsibilities was amazing. And so this evening, we want to give him a special presentation. Could I ask you to join us, please? And again, working with, you know, Chief Malinowski and Captain Walker and Trevor Benson and Chief O'Connell and our lieutenant and captain at the Cabazon Station for our school in Riverside County, I can't tell you how honored I am that, that they would come together and we could work together and just make sure that we're doing the best that we can. And with what we're doing, we're really ensuring that not only the cities are taken care of, but our children in the cities are taken care of, whether there's any kind of emergency, like the power outages, or if there's some other kind of catastrophe that happens, we want to be able to be the model communities for our entire state, and what Captain Walker shared at that presentation really set us apart. So with that, want to read it?
All right. Certificate of Recognition. The following award is given to Captain Mike Walker for his unwavering support to the Ukaypa-Cala Mesa Joint Unified School District and for representing the district as a panelist at the 2024 California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference. Captain Walker truly works to make a difference in the life of each child.
And I, I know board member then, Bob Miller, council member Bob Miller, knows that that is our, that's our motto, making a difference in the life of every child. And so Captain Walker, thank you for doing that.
Okay, as they're making their way back to their seats, I've got a lot to read to you all this evening because I cannot memorize all this. Our city has a lot of people that really invest into it, and we got a lot of people who want to honor tonight and acknowledge, so first one that we are going to have come up here is one of our citizens on patrol, John Eck, Van Eck, you can work your weight on down here, John. Citizens patrol volunteers are critical to operation of the police station. They help patrol the streets, issue parking citations, perform traffic control for various incidents. All of our citizens on patrol have special recognition, and they, they donate a lot of hours, and they really help out in our community in a lot of different ways that I don't think the, the public even understands. And it's all volunteer, and they come in at odd hours at the, at a heartbeat. John not only comes in and helps out at a moment's notice, he's one of our training officers for the other volunteers. He also donates time to CAL FIRE and FEMA and the Red Cross. John? Next is Captain Alan Skip Miller. Skip, come on down here. Friend of mine, I've known him for a long time. When I was here in Ukaypa, I was on patrol, occasionally he would sit in the right seat of my patrol car, and we'd do a couple of ride-alongs here and there. But here's a little info about Skip. Our firefighters work around the clock to respond to all manners of emergencies. Anyone with children or caring for a aging parent, understand the peace of mind that comes with knowing that our firefighters are trained and equipped and only, only a moment's notice away to address any emergency. CAL FIRE leads the industry, and we are happy and proud to contract with them. They do an outstanding job. Captain Miller has served in the fire department for, get this, 41 years, and of those years, 26 in our community here in Ukaypa. Captain, we really appreciate your dedication and service to our community and appreciate our friendship as well. Okay, next is Deputy Michael Casaneda. He works his way down here. It's, it's an honor to be able to present this to him, one, because he's a, he's a coworker, works for the same organization I do, two, he serves our, our community here in Ukaypa. And if you weren't around to know that earlier this, oh, this last year, as he was driving home, he saved a young child and a, and a mother from a train in the San Timoteo Canyon, that the vehicle had stopped on the tracks and she couldn't get the vehicle off the tracks in time. But see, he was off duty when he did that. He wasn't even on duty. He could have just kept on going, but he didn't. And he has a dedication to serve his community, whether it's down in that canyon here in Ukaypa, and it's an honor to have you serving our community, sir, and our department. Thank you. Thank you. Next is our Nonprofit of the Year, Smiles for Seniors. Ukaypa's nonprofit organization fill many needs in the community, sometimes this work is novel, sometimes this work supplemental with the government, and the tasks we're trying to accomplish here in the area. Either way, nonprofits improve our community and enrich them. Today, we recognize the Smiles for Seniors Foundation as the 2024 Nonprofit of the Year. Come on down. Okay, our last one for this evening is our Citizen of the Year, Rocky Cobb. Come on down, Rocky. In every town, there are those rare individuals who embody the very spirit in service, who give of themselves tirelessly, and not for recognition, just because they love their community and they want to be involved. Rocky Cobb is the Citizen of the Year. I've known him for several years, back when I first came here as a deputy, he works at the printing shop up right around the corner from my house, it's a family operation, it's been there a long time, and he's also part of Rotary, and has been for how long?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years? It's a good amount of time. He volunteers, he's a key part in our, in our community, and congratulations on being our Citizen of the Year. This community is really truly amazing, the amount of people that we have that invest and volunteer their time into our community. Moving on to the, the next thing on our agenda here is public comment. Keep in mind that you have a three-minute time limit, and it is supposed to be uninterrupted, so we are not supposed to dialogue, have dialogue with you. If you have a question or concern, we can address it at the end of the meeting. Ma'am?
We have three public comments tonight, so we will start with Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Martha Globka and Mary Ruder.
So I'm going to give you a warning early this year, to make sure that you go to the Run for the Hills. Run for the Hills is going to be April 26th, I encourage all of you to go there, to run, walk, use your wheelchair, whatever you want to do, but, you know, participate in that. The second thing is to let you know, the Youth Advisory Committee is planning a trip, and if any businesses or personnel can assist them, please help them out with that as well. Okay. Our council members that have been here have time to go through January, our new council members have time to get acquainted with what's going on, and so on, so I encourage you to at least, even though the divisions and districts, you're really all working for the city, and you want to help the citizens to have a better place to live in, where we would attract businesses and attract residents, so I encourage you to listen to them. Sometimes it's something of value that you can use for what you decide on, sometimes it's just to hear them out, but I think it's important that we pay attention to our citizens, and that even though they don't directly impact a certain vote or something, we should hear them out, and I encourage you to do that, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, can I say something real quick to council? Okay. I just want to congratulate you guys, you clean up well. I love this. And especially you, Chris. I didn't recognize you when I watched it on TV, I was like, who is that? It's wonderful. And also, I want to thank John, thank you so much for bringing prayer in here, I think it's marvelous, and it humbles everyone, so I just want to thank you guys, yeah. Okay, now I'll get to the business. Good evening, city council members, tonight I'd like to talk to you about perception, and why it's important to the community and the city. Today, I had a meeting with Chris Mann, and we had a discussion about why I was going to address this tonight. Last Wednesday, when I went to Planning Commission meeting to welcome the new members, right before I spoke, Chris had a video prepared to welcome them as well. It alarmed me, as I felt it may have given the new commissioners the impression that community sentiment isn't really what the commission should take into consideration, and it concerned me. Given the way the last two years have been between the citizens and the city, as you know, many citizens have had distrust, and it hit a nerve with me. We had a great discussion today about why it was important to choose our awards carefully, because we all get misunderstood from time to time, and we also discussed the tension between the community, still between the citizens and the city. Save Ukaypa came up, and I told them I felt I have been given a bad, they'd been given a bad rap, and that they have grown exponentially, and that it was a diverse group of people that didn't even know each other a couple of years ago. It is a good group of people, that if we explored it, love and care about the city, as I hope all of us do here. It came to me during our discussion that we need to find a way to instill trust and respect for one another, and I feel that there needs to be a group of citizens and city representatives to meet every couple of months, to share ideas, speak about our concerns, and educate each other in a respectful way, much like any other committee. This would be a commitment to all involved, and perhaps then we could begin to put out the old fires, and extinguish ones that are just a spark. Perhaps, too, a representative could occasionally present what is happening at council meetings, I hope council will take this suggestion into consideration, and together, we can make this the city to envy, I was going to say, to make Ukaypa great again, but I thought I'd hold it. But anyway, thank you for listening to me tonight, members, and we appreciate you, we really do.
I know you all know me, but my name is Mary Ruder, I am a resident of the North Bench, and I am here tonight representing the Ukaypa Chamber of Commerce. On Thursday, February 6th, the Ukaypa Chamber of Commerce held their monthly Good Morning of Ukaypa breakfast, it was a fabulous meeting, with Pamela Deans from the Micro Enterprise Collaborative of the Inland Empire, speaking about how that organization can help small businesses, especially micro businesses, oh, that's me, and Judy Woolsey was there representing the council, and I thank you very, very much for coming, and I wanted to make sure that every council member, all of our, our city officials, and our police and firefighters are always welcome to our meetings, our next meeting will be on March 6th, so we hold it at the Ukaypa Women's Club at 8:00 on the first Thursday of every month, y'all come.
The remainder of our cards are for items eight and nine, so we'll hear those comments when those items come up.
Perfect, okay. So this time, is there any conflicts of interest that city council members need to disclose at this time?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, does any member of the council have an item that they want to pull for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number six.
Okay, anybody else?
I will move items one through five, and seven for approval.
I'll second that.
You have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, moving on to item six.
Good evening, council, and, good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is a special event permit application with the title Love Ukaypa and Cala Mesa. I'd like to invite Randy up to the podium with me, I would butcher his last name, even though it's easy, I'm just not good at names, Bolling, that's, can't get easier than that. Grace Point Fellowship submitted a special event permit application called Love Ukaypa and Cala Mesa, and the details of the event are as follows. They would like to hold an event at the Ukaypa Performing Arts Center and various locations throughout Ukaypa and Cala Mesa on May 3rd, and set up at 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and then the event would be from 8:00 to 9:30, and cleanup would be from 9:30 to 10:30. I'm going to pass the microphone over to Randy to tell you a little bit more about the details of using the Performing Arts Center, and then I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Megan, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here representing actually a collaborative effort with other pastors in the cities of Ukaypa and Cala Mesa, and I want to just name them off real quickly, Oak Valley Church, Mission with a Vision Spanish Church, Cala Mesa Worship Center, Retreat Church, Garden City Church, and you already met Joelle Vincent, so the Seventh Day Adventist Church of Ukaypa, and Bryan Street Baptist Church. And we have been meeting and collaborating with this vision that comes from an organization called Love Our Cities, which is a nationwide organization consisting of 100 different cities, some of those cities are local, and we have been envisioning a citywide effort to serve our city through various projects, and basically, it comes down to love, love, love our cities. We know that the Beatles sang about love, they said love is all you need, but then they broke up. So I'd rather quote the words of Jesus, "Love your neighbor as yourself," and we know our city's gone through some hard times, and as we were meeting as pastors, we got to talking and praying, and we felt like this would be a great time for us to just go and love our cities by serving our cities, and this could be a variety of projects, anything from cleaning up trash, neighborhood parks, to helping shut-ins who aren't able to mow their grass, to visiting shut-ins or care facilities, memory care facilities, there's a whole host of different ways that we'd like to attempt to serve our city, and we want to do this with volunteers from our city, and so, we are taking it to our congregations, and we have a website set up, it's loveukaypa.com, where citizens can go on and they can sign up for various projects. The city's been gracious enough to give us three projects already, that the pastors are beginning to mobilize to, to serve, and we're excited. We, we have, we have a desire to launch this day of service with a kickoff event at the Y-PAC, and we'd love to have the opportunity to honor our city leaders, our pastors, by inviting them to the platform, and rallying with some high-energy music, and then sending everybody off with maps to their various projects, where they'll get to love their cities by serving their cities. And so, we are nonprofit, working with business leaders in the community, and asking for donations, but we'd like to invite you to partner with us as well, in the way of considering your participation as leaders in our community, but also, in the effort of considering waiving some fees, to make this just a little bit easier for us to love our cities.
And this evening, the recommendation is that city council approve the special event permit application submitted by Grace Point Fellowship, and waive the special event permit application fee. This concludes my report, Randy Bolling, or myself, can answer any questions you may have.
I would like to know, I don't have a problem with the actual event itself, the purpose of it, but you have a large parking lot, you hold other events there, and you're asking us to waive our $200 fee, which is not that big a fee for, you know, for, for an event, which is the normal fee that's charged, is what I'm trying to say, and, you know, at some point, we have to start looking at handing out special considerations to events, and people, and organizations, because we have a deficit. Now, is it a matter of you can't afford the $200?
Oh, no, it's not a matter of that at all. In fact, initially, when we suggested this idea, we knew the city was in a deficit, and we spoke to some city leaders in a meeting at my church, and, and we knew Measure S may or may not pass, and so, we actually went to the city leaders and said, how can we help? We, we don't have a lot of money, but we can, we can rally volunteers, so are there some city projects that we can do that maybe typically, city employees would do? And that's actually how we came up with the initial list of three projects. So, why the Y-PAC? Well, it's in the heart of our city, and we just felt like if we want to rally our city, the city of Ukaypa and Cala Mesa, I couldn't think of a better location than at that beautiful Y-PAC Center, where not only, where we'll be having the Music and Arts Festival on the day that we're considering, but we have businesses that are up and down that boulevard, and we want to invite them to participate as well, and perhaps even make some donations of, like coffee from the White Rabbit, or some breakfast burritos, as an incentive to invite citizens to come out, and, you know, patronize their local businesses as well. So you just don't get that at our parking lot at church, I'm sorry, we love it, but it just doesn't have all of that, for this type of event.
We've voted to deliver a balanced budget, and you know, there's so many other programs, like your sports programs and everything, where they support their own programs, and they don't ask the city to donate for events, like, or for their events. And I just firmly believe that we've set a goal to have a balanced budget this year, and at some point, we have to stop handing money out to groups and events, and this is my main reason that I have questioned this.
Well, I am sure if this is a sticking point, there will be plenty of people willing to donate the $200 if we can get that green light, we want to be a blessing, not a burden to our city. It has been the spirit of many cities, when they catch the vision for this type of event, that they're happy to do what they can to assist and aid this endeavor, because of the benefits that these cities have seen, as people go out and love all their citizens and the city. So, I leave it in your hands, and we're happy to find a way to pay the $200 if that's what's needed.
Any other comments?
Hey Randy, how are you? It's good to see you.
You too, Bob.
I think we tried that Love Ukaypa a while back.
I think you piloted that for me many years ago.
It actually began back in Desto, I think is where it became successful.
Yes, that's right.
Where you were pastor at one time, so, yeah, some experience with it. So, I think annually, we do some CDBG money, and we do some grant money, if this is going to be a continual thing, I think apply for that, we do allocate some money, I think we just did it last month, and try to do that, if it's going to be an annual thing, that's some sponsorship. If it's going to be an annual thing, that's some sponsorship. You know, that the concept, if I remember when Riverside was getting involved in some of the other cities, if you look at the website, I mean, there's many cities that are partnering with nonprofits, and if you look at the board of directors there, they're pretty active in their communities, what they're doing, especially out of Modesto, I think is where it was very successful. So anything to bring our community together. I know we have a Make a Difference Day, we still want to reboot that a little bit. I know the schools help a lot with a lot of these community programs, we want to make sure we're including them if they can, but the people show up and do that also, we've done that in the past.
Right.
But community programs are good, there's nothing to matter, I'm sure we can find some projects, as long as people can show up. Donuts are always good, sugar, get people out there, that always works, and stuff like that. But, you know, I think the concept of it's good. I think what council member Woolsey is talking about is, we do have a lot of groups that come, and you know, what precedent are we setting for these things that we do, though we love them all, we just, we gotta be a little careful about it. But I think if this thing can take off, I mean, who doesn't want to love, right? Love Ukaypa. Could probably be something significant, especially with the backing of the, I think it's six or seven churches you mentioned, Randy?
We're up to nine now.
Yeah, I mean, that's awesome, and some of the stuff you're doing with the school districts on emergency management and stuff like that. So how can we go wrong without a faith-based approach? So I think it'll be a good thing. I just, I'd like to see it grow where it could be, but we'll have to do it together at some point. But I think next year, when we come back for some of that grant funding, I mean, I think you should get, try to get into that cycle, hopefully you build it by then, and there could be a targeted number to try to ease some of the financial burdens that we may be experiencing. You know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible and good stewards, and I know $200 isn't that much, I know, but every little bit counts. So I hope you understand where a council member was coming from on that. But the concept, Randy, we've talked about it over the years, it looks like it's finally happening, so good for you, and I hope it works out great.
Thank you.
Pastor, forgive me for being on the phone, I was on your guys' website looking at it, looks nice. I'd like to suggest maybe a donate here button, because I think there's plenty of people who'd also donate, if not time, maybe some money to the cause, because I think it's a great cause.
Yes.
Moreover, I've been on the council now for over four years, and while my colleagues on the left side of the dais aren't incorrect at all, a lot of people come out asking for money, but I've never heard of one so far saying, "Hey, what can we do that offsets maybe city labor?" And so this is more innovative than I've seen, and we do have Make a Difference Day, that's usually all, I mean, pretty minor as far as city staff is concerned. I mean, we have city staff present, but usually they're on their days off, and they're helping make a difference. What you're saying is, "Hey, free up public works to go do other stuff, we'll take that one." This is different. So should this event permit not be agreed to be waived tonight, I'll pay the $200 out of my city council stipend, no problem, because this is something that we do need, and you're bringing a revolutionary idea to really come together as a community, and I like the faith-based approach. So I think it's different, I don't think this is, you're not asking for money, you're asking to be part of our team in Ukaypa and love Ukaypa. And I like that you've already, you didn't come with an idea, you came with a plan, you came with a website, and you came with nine faith-based organizations who are ready to do it. So it wasn't just, "Hey, this might work," it's working, you're already doing it. And so you're gonna get there, you're gonna, I think the Y-PAC should be used for it, I'm gonna do whatever I can to make it happen, because this is not the same as what we usually see. Usually we see, "Hey, we offer a service that benefits people in the community." This is, we want to be the community. So I think it's altogether different, and they're not wrong, we have to be mindful of that, but this is helping offset, you know, what otherwise would be a city burden at times, especially with these, you already identified three projects with our city staff, so we're in a different boat from what we're usually seeing. So hats off to you, Pastor, and God bless for everything you're doing.
Yeah, that's, thank you, thank you. Well, you beat me to the punch, I was gonna suggest the same thing, so I think you're covered no matter what, and if I can make a motion to pass this, I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
All right, I've got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Question? To pass it with the 200 waived?
That was my second.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a first, a second, to accept it as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not voting against the project, but I cannot vote with it being waived. So I vote no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that moves us to item number eight. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Item eight tonight is the citizen service appointments to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, also known as EDAC, and the Mobile Home Park Committee. On January 21st, the City Council appointed citizens to the various commissions and committees of the city, and directed the City Clerk's Office to extend the recruitment for EDAC, the Mobile Home Park Committee, the Measure S Oversight Committee, and the Vector Control Committee. Tonight, staff is asking that you consider the applications specifically for EDAC and the Mobile Home Park Committees. We have several public comment cards, so Mayor, if that's okay, we'll start off with public comment before I jump into the rest of my presentation. So we will start off with Robert Alva, followed by Michael Gardner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you, I have an application for this. I'd like to offer, sorry, I'm a little nervous today, bear with me a little bit, please. I guess the first question is why I want to do this, and I've seen Ukaypa growing in various ways, and oh boy, we got in and out, so we're on the map. So we're progressing here, and now we have other major stores going in, and I believe that the economic growth to Ukaypa is paramount. We need a roadmap to the future, and I want to be a part of that, I want to offer my assistance. A little bit about me, I spent 25 years in the military, and so I'm a veteran. I also spent 20 years working for Union Pacific Railroad in various positions, including Working with the railroad was quite an experience, because you have to make decisions that will cost the company millions of dollars. So you have to, in that position, you have to consider a lot of different options and issues, and then remedies to those problems. So I have a little bit of experience doing that. Also, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, I live in District One, which is the reserve over on the other side by the college, and I'm a board member there, and not only am I a board member, but I'm also the treasurer. And dealing with the finances and of the HOA, I've been, we've been able to, and I have, obviously, I'm just a member, so I have other people with me, but we've been able to have a 90% funding for the fiscal year. We've been able to maintain a swimming pool, tennis court, basketball court, clubhouse, spa, and we're looking at, and we're looking at, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Alva. Thank you, your time's up.
For my citizens' application to the, I think what you call the EDAC Committee, Economic Development. My wife and I moved to Ukaypa one year ago, January 2024. We sold our home in Los Angeles, we moved out here, while I'm still working, I'm getting ready to retire in April. Forty-two-year commercial finance bank, banking guy, and I think I can just offer, you know, from my experience in that industry, offer what you need as elected officials, advice, what your constituents are looking for, is to help develop the overall economy here in Ukaypa, and help build it, and what everybody's looking for it to become. Offered any questions? You have my package and everything, so I don't know if you had any questions about me personally, but that's it. Thank you.
Richard Hess, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Richard Hess, and I'm applying for the Mobile Home Committee as owner and representative. I'm the general manager for Inland Champion Investments. We own and operate 10 mobile home parks here in the city of Ukaypa, and I also live and own a coach in Patricia Mobile Home Park. I have many years' experience operating mobile home parks. I've worked with the city, HCD, local contractors, utility representatives, and others with all aspects of operating mobile home parks in the city of Ukaypa. I was a member of the Mobile Home Committee last year, and I felt that I was able to contribute, provide productive insight, and worked well with the other members, and I thank you for the consideration.
Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Edward Timmons.
Good evening, council members. Again, a lot of what I talk about is my personal experience, and the work that I do, we have a bunch of committees and so on, and on the committees, there are the committees that have personnel that directly affects them, but sometimes we need expertise from outside of our own committee, and we bring them in as ad hoc members. On your Mobile Homes Committee, there is an applicant, and if she's still on there, she does not live in Ukaypa, and I think the rules that we just recently listened to were either a resident of Ukaypa or in the immediate vicinity like in the county. I could be wrong, but that's how I read it. I think that this particular person could be an important advisory as an ad hoc member, but I feel that it's probably inappropriate for her to be an active member, voting if there is voting, and forming the type of things that are brought over to the City Council regarding the mobile homes. But that's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Edward Timmons.
Good evening, council. My name is Edward Timmons, and I'm a resident here in Ukaypa. My family's been here since the 70s with Marksberry Bookkeeping and Tax Services. And just to give you a bit of background about myself, is I went to Ukaypa High, unfortunately I dropped out, so I don't know if I've seen anyone here, but I went to Crafton Hills College, got my associates in business, graduated with distinction, and then went to Cal Baptist University, graduated summa cum laude in business with a minor in management, worked as a manager for Amazon, launched PSP1 in Beaumont, and then got my master's at Cal State San Bernardino, so if there's any Yodys in here, and then worked towards my master's on entrepreneurship and innovation in the program that was associated with the EDAC and the IEC for the SBDC here with the incubator, and so trained in how to grow and scale businesses, took a first-place award for competing against all the top business Cal States here in California, and brought it here to the Inland Empire. So I went and pitched in Silicon Valley, really passionate about business, have consulted many small businesses here in Ukaypa, still am, and also in the Inland Empire, you know, from here to Rancho Cucamonga, I'd say. So I'm a licensed real estate broker, I'm a member of the Board of Realtors, I'm a licensed mortgage loan originator, and I also perform forensic accounting out of a firm in San Bernardino. So I hope that you consider me for EDAC. I'm passionate about economic development and sustainable economic development. There's a few different trajectories that a municipality can go in supporting economic development, and there's some really good resources out there that I have access to. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Mark Westwood.
It's a good thing I'm in radio, because I have to kind of once in a while punt, and I didn't realize we were doing this tonight, but some of you may know that I was recently elected as Chair of the Mobile Home Rent Property Owners, and not, excuse me, the Mobile Home Residents Association, YMRA. I'm a little nervous, believe it or not, I get more nervous doing this than going on the radio. And so I wanted to share with you my vision to be on the Mobile Home Rent Committee, which is, just meets twice a year, and it's a good voice, and it's a good exchange of information. But I want to extend that, I want to see this, envision this as a collaboration between mobile home park owners, between residents, between renters, between the community, and bringing the community together to come up with the best solutions. And mobile home communities that don't have rent control and have an active organization like that, rents have doubled in the last 10 years. We can't have that, we can't make our seniors and our residents and our mobile homeowners, you know, homeless, but we do need to have reasonable rent increases so that the infrastructure may be provided, so that the owners have a reasonable profit, they're in business too, and that's the kind of my vision, what I see, and I think I would be a good candidate to be on the Mobile Home Rent Committee, because I think I can work across the board with everybody. So I thank you for your time, and I hope I'll have your vote. Thank you. Mark Westwood.
Okay, I have no more public comments for this item. So we will begin with EDAC. If you turn to page 88 of your agenda packet, you will see a table for each committee which reflects the application received and the positions for which they should be considered. Please note the asterisks on the EDAC table that indicate the respective agency board appointment for the Chamber of Commerce, Board of Realtors, Crafton Hills College, and Ukaypa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District. Now, if you turn your attention to the screen, you will see all the information for the committees. So for EDAC, we have an eight-member committee, we have one member from the Chamber of Commerce, one from the Board of Realtors, one member from Crafton Hills College, one member from the school district, one member from a financial institution, one local developer, and then we have two at-large members. Optional is one non-voting council member. You will see here, the first four are already filled out for the Chamber of Commerce, we received their appointments already, so we went ahead and pre-filled that. For the financial institution, we received one application from Michael Gardner. For the local developer, we received one application for Alex Patel, and we have two at-large positions, and we received seven applications, which are listed over, the applicants are listed over, off to the right-hand side. So we have Brandy Gomez, Christopher Marcarion, David Higginson, Donna Snodgrass, Edward Timmons, Lori O'Connor, and Robert Alva. So if the council would like to go ahead with the at-large, we can go ahead and get started, and then we can talk about the non-voting council member.
So the at-large, we'll start first, we're not going to deal with the financial and local developer first?
You can start with those, the council will need to vote on those, but just keep in mind that we did only receive the one application for each of those categories. But we will need the council to still make a motion second, and then make, vote for that.
So we, okay, we can do it together, though, we can do those two with the other, all right?
Yes.
So let's start with, excuse me, sorry, let's start with Councilman Woolsey, see if you have any input on this, we'll start there, we'll work our way to my right, so we'll go from you to Bob, then Councilman Miller, sorry, and then Venable and Justin.
Okay, so we're starting at the top?
At-large.
At-large, okay, yes. I would like to nominate Donna Snodgrass. I would like to nominate Donna Snodgrass.
Okay, and?
And so just a reminder, sir, for the at-large, any council member can make the nomination. And then as long as we have a majority of the council vote in favor of it, then that person would be appointed to the committee.
Do you want the nominations first? Or do we want to do individual vote for each one first?
If we can do individual votes. But again, any council member can, can make the nomination for the at-large position.
I'll second Donna.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So there's the first one.
Okay.
So the second one, Councilman Miller?
I'll abstain.
Councilman Venable?
I'll nominate Edward Timmons.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Councilman Beaver?
Mr. Chris Markarian?
I've got a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Stay.
Okay. So there's your two.
Okay, congratulations to Donna Snodgrass and Christopher Markarian.
Do we need a vote on the two appointed? Or the two financial and local?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Stay.
Keep standing.
Thank you. And then if we can get a motion and second to accept the other four, again, those were board appointments from their agencies. But if we can just get the council a motion and a second to accept those.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Thank you. And then the city council does have the option for one non-voting council member.
Anybody interested?
I'll make a motion, Justin Beaver.
Just throw him out there.
You're lucky you're big. You're lucky you're big. Okay, Justin Beaver.
We have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? All right.
Congratulations, sir. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the Mobile Home Park Committee. So this committee is eight members. We have five Ukaypa Mobile Home Park residents under rent control. We have two Ukaypa Mobile Home Park owners or owner representatives, and we have one industry representative. For the industry representative, we received one application for Julie Polly. For the park owners, we have three applications listed over. To the right are the applicants, Mitchell Emerson, Heather Hadnot, and Richard Hess. We have two spots available. And then for the park resident, we have five spots available. However, we only received three, three applications. We did run this recruitment in the news, in the newspaper. We posted it on social media. I attended a YMRA meeting where I got to speak to them in person and I passed out some applications. But unfortunately, we still only ended up with three applications.
Okay. So we have two short and we have one extra on the owners representatives, correct? So how do we want to do this?
I'll move that the three residents be appointed.
I'll second. I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then when it comes to the mobile home park owners and representatives, do we have a motion?
I will move Richard Hess and Mitchell Emerson.
I second.
We have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then lastly, just a motion and second for the industry representative, please.
And?
Motion.
Okay, first, Councilman Venable. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I think we got them all.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations to everybody who was appointed. We will continue to recruit for the park residents. That recruitment will remain open until all positions are filled. Otherwise, that concludes my presentation unless the city council has any questions for me.
Any questions? No? All right, item number nine, Mr. Joe Predetto.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, back in November, the majority of you got to receive a report on the library project and approve a project use agreement. At that time, we explained that we would be coming to you about this time with a little bit more information for a decision on how to proceed. So we'll go do a quick recap of the project for the public and for the new council members. It starts off with 2001, 2010, the city and the county doing needs assessments that verifies that based on the population and the condition of the current library facility, that the city has a need for a new one. The city went on and applied for and received in October of '22 a $9 million matching grant from the state of California. At the time, the city had not identified matching funds, sources of those funds to match that amount. And in January '23, 2023, the city manager at the time reported some proposed sources that didn't end up working out. In February of 2024, last year, we had come to the city council to talk about some of our efforts and successes to secure $6 million of project funds from the county library, from Supervisor Don Rao, and from the San Juan Well Indian Tribe to help bring this to fruition. That was a very difficult lift because we went through a change in the CEOs at the county. We went through having to rebuild some relationships with the tribe. And we had to negotiate with the school district to use their property. And all that took some time. We got, got through that process. And then in November of '24, we had solidified that agreement. I do want to pause there and just reiterate the extent to which the project partners worked together to get us to that point. A project that started off in a very bad position where we did not start with a plan in place and we really salvaged something and brought together. And we got really close and now we're at that step where we have to make a decision to move forward. So in November of last year, the project estimated cost was 20.5 million or more. That includes $18 million of construction of the library, the $9 million from the state plus a $9 million match, plus an estimated 2.5 million or more for site improvements. That would bring the city's share under the use agreement to 5.5 million or more. In November, we opened. And then last month, we closed an RFQ process to find a design-build partner to deliver the project. Fermin will go further into the design-build process and that RFQ process. But you may recall, we chose, staff suggested this route as a way to offer price guarantees and faster delivery. We received 10 responses. And of the top bidder, of the top submitters, top qualified submitters, the average estimated construction price was $25 million. So 4.5 more than the estimated in November. So that brings the city's expected contribution to about $10 million. So again, I want to reiterate our thanks to our project partners for their commitment. And I got lost on the slides there. So we're bringing this to you because there's some serious considerations involved in moving forward. And the big one is, at a $10 million expected city contribution, the city presently has about $14.5 million in unrestricted reserves. Approving, moving forward with that contribution would use about two-thirds of our unrestricted reserve balance. And that doesn't consider current year deficits. And we'll have Phil White go deeper into the finances in a moment. So at $10 million, what has the city staff done to identify and bridge that gap? Because we know that that's a consideration. $6 million was a big lift. Getting another additional several or 10 is, is a really big, 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 big task. It's unlikely that we get more money from the state and the grant documents say that any grant money or any additional state funding does not count towards the match. So it wouldn't be a dollar-for-dollar match, but it would help. However, that seems to be unlikely based on our discussions with our state lobbyists. Federal support. Depending on how the current federal budget goes, we have a request for an earmark through Congressman Olburnolti for $500,000. That's a pretty big ask. And we asked for $2 million. He put in for the 500 because that pot of money is the most competitive earmark money because it doesn't require a match and it's very broad. In fact, if we get that money, it will be able to be something that we repurpose. But we may be able to apply for more earmarks. This present presidential administration is looking through the federal budget and spending with a fine-tooth comb. And it may be unlikely and very rare that we get additional significant funding from the federal government to bring this project forward. We also negotiated, we also requested from the state a reduction in the size of the library. And they approved it at 18,000. If we theoretically, we could ask to reduce it even further. However, then we would have to renegotiate our project use agreement. And then to make it fit into our budget, theoretically, the size of the library would be about what it is now, potentially less, defeating the purpose. Private donations and foundations. That is possible. But again, that money is very competitive and finding those pockets of money takes additional time. And we're up against a grant clock. A search of foundations that give money to libraries find that some of the bigger awards on a regular basis tend to be between half a million and a million dollars per award. So we would need to get a lot of those to get to the 10 million. I just wanted to take a moment there to say that it's not that we did, it's not that we evaluated every possible option. But as it comes to turning stones, we turn the biggest ones. The only ones left are small ones that you'd have to turn a lot of them over to get to that $10 million mark. So staff understands the desire for a library. And staff and project partners went above and beyond to deliver this project. The project started in a bad position. However, we made major successes to salvage it. And we inquired every option to help bridge the funding gap. Construction costs have risen rapidly and construction costs are outside of our control. The city's share of a $25 million project would be $10 million. The city's unrestricted balance is $14.5 million. Proceeding would leave the city with approximately 4.5 million in reserve. And that doesn't count current year deficit. So with this in mind, staff is making the recommendation that the city council not proceed with the project. We know that it's a difficult recommendation considering all the work that staff put into it. And we know it's a difficult situation for you to consider. But after lots of work and discussion and the present situation that the city's finances are in and the direction we're planning to go, we think this is the prudent course to recommend. So with that, we'll go ahead and Fermin can talk a little bit about the RFQ process and the design-build.
Thank you, Joe. As council's aware, there are, excuse me, there are two common methods used to construct and deliver projects like this. The most common or the traditional method is the design-bid-build method, which is a three-step process that you see on the bottom on that exhibit. What we explored for this project is the design-build method, which is essentially a two-step process. As Joe mentioned, we initiated the project in November after the city council approved the project and use agreement. And as you can see in the exhibit, there are a few benefits to the design-build method. The two important ones that are noted in the exhibit is that there is an average time savings of about 33% in using the design-build method to deliver the project. And also, on average, based on the projects that have, have been constructed and delivered using this method, there's a, about a 6% average cost savings. And just to go over some of the other benefits of the design-build, design-build method, you know, using that, that message or that method, the different phases can be completed simultaneously. As you can see on the exhibit, on the arrow on the top, you can see multiple phases occurring at the same time. The preliminary design and the final design, for example, could be completed at the same time as the estimate and the bid and even as you process the permit, process the permits. Another benefit is that there is better coordination between the design team and the contractor since it is one entity that is doing both. And associated with that, there is a better accountability where, where again, one firm is a design builder. So they are responsible for the entire project as opposed to having multiple entities responsible for, for the different phases. There's better flexibility in that the design team can directly work with the contractor. And there's the benefit of the value engineering process that can be done where you can ensure that the, the project is constructed within budget. And if there are any changes in scope in the design, then again, that coordination can be better done between the contractor and the design firm to, to be able to complete the project on schedule and on time. And I think one of the, one of the biggest benefits that we saw here, which is why we chose the design-build method, is that we, we did have a grant funding deadline. The $9 million grant did have a deadline where the project, project needed to be completed by March of 2026. And we saw the design-build method as a, a useful tool that could help us achieve that goal, especially since we could not start the effort until November of 2024 when the city council approved the project and joint use agreement. Again, you could see clearly some of the other benefits there. One that I'd like to point out is if you look at the, the traditional design-bid-build method on the bottom, where the red arrows, red arrows are to go to the left. With that process, again, that is a traditional process that we use, the city uses for many of our public works projects. And when, when time isn't a factor, you are able to go through the design, the estimate, the bid. And then you can, you can go through the bid process. And if the project is, if the bid comes in above your estimate, time isn't an issue. You do have the luxury of rebidding the project. And so you would go back, make some changes in the design. Yes, you would incur some additional design costs, but you could redesign the project, rebid it, and achieve some cost savings there. Sometimes you do have to reduce the scope of the work, but that is one method of, of reducing costs. But again, by the time you do that, you do add time, months to the project. Again, if time isn't, isn't a factor, then you do, you, you could do that. Again, with this project, because of the grant funding, there were some time restrictions. So at this time, I'd like to ask our Director of Finance, Phil White, to come up and talk about some of the fiscal portions.
Some of the exciting part of this project? Okay, so Joe introduced the idea of unrestricted reserves. So in, in government land, municipal finance land, there's five components of equity. We have non-spendable equity. We have committed equity. We have non-spendable equity, we have committed equity, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. And with that unassigned equity, and it's kind, it's synonymous with what Joe was saying, unrestricted reserves, that unassigned is our, is our runway in times of deficit. Once that unreserve, unassigned is gone, that means that we have serious problems. We're making the front page of the paper, and we have no maneuverability. So that, that unassigned bucket is, is our, it's, it's the last, it's the last good stuff that we have to maneuver. Joe mentioned it's currently at fourteen and a half million. It's important to note that that, that calculation is done once a year when we close our books. We take all of our equity, put it together, and then break it up into the five components. Anything that doesn't hit the top four components falls down into that unassigned. So that unassigned is the lowest level, can be used for anything. And again, it's the, the most important number because everything else is spoken for. And so once that fourteen point five is gone, going into the Measure S campaign, we talked a lot about the maneuverability, we're acting, we're being proactive. Part of that is we have fourteen and a half million dollars in unassigned. As we're in deficit, we're chewing up that fourteen and a half million, and we're, we want to make, have a new path before we get to zero in that number. So all of that to say, the, the, that unrestricted reserve, that unassigned fund balance is a, is a key number. Working back into this specific project, it started with, we, we got a grant, somebody else's money, for nine million dollars. That, that nine million dollars required a one hundred percent match of eligible costs. And so we had to come up with a total of eighteen million, so we were, we were targeting an eighteen million dollar project at that point in time. We were successful with working with, with our existing partners at that time and finding new partners to find six million dollars of, of a match. And so we had fifteen million dollars of other people's money, and at that point in time, the city had earmarked or committed to, to make the whole thing work with the three million dollar contribution to the project should it go forward. As Joe mentioned, as we worked through this process, we, we got the RFQ back, and we're looking at a twenty-five million dollar project. Part of that is eligible costs, but part of it, like the site improvement component and certain other elements are not grant eligible. So that means that when we add it all together, it's a twenty-five million dollar issue. We have three million already committed to the match, and then the other seven million dollars above and beyond falls to the city. We're, we're out of, we've made all the phone calls we can make, and, and so that seven million dollars to make the project go forward at this point would also fall to the city. I did want to point out that going into Measure S, we were talking about an operating deficit. We're, we're exiting that operating deficit next fiscal year. We'll have a balanced budget, so our operating deficit will not exist. This is a capital project, so it's outside of, it's outside of that entirely. When we talk about capital, it's a one-time cost, it doesn't factor into operating at all. So the operating deficit is going to go away regardless of what we choose to do tonight. However, this is an additional ten million dollars that would come out of that unassigned, and as Joe mentioned, represents about two thirds. The timing of that calculation, that one, that once-per-year calculation, does not factor in the existing seven point three million dollar deficit that we started this, this year with. It's not part of that calculation at all. So, so we have that deficit to consider, that impact on the fourteen point five as well. And I'll turn it back to council to, to ask questions.
Do the councils have questions? Comments?
Yep. So, Mr. City Manager, the city's committed three million dollars already, or earmarked it, as our finance director said. What kind of, we'll, we'll take this in pieces, so stick with me. What kind of renovations and remodels can be done to our existing library with three million dollars since we've already committed to that?
That's something we'd have to, we'd have to explore. In general, though, I would, I would have to question whether it would make sense to put millions of dollars into a building of that age that is significantly undersized. You know, I think the idea would be, in the not-too-distant future, that that building would be demolished when hopefully there is a library at another site. So, you know, one of the things I'd point out is that, you know, this council has established as a goal for the year, the establishment of a strategic plan. I would envision that facility needs assessment would be part of that, and so at that time, the council could assess whether, you know, library, additional or new library facilities or expansion of existing facilities would be a facility need that is going to be on the priority list, and if so, where on the priority list. But to directly answer your question, we, we'd have to investigate that, but I think we should really consider whether we want to be putting millions of dollars into a building that's that old.
So my follow-up point on that, owing to forecasting and not putting a civic building on a prime piece, piece of real estate like our current city hall on our main thoroughfare, and maybe looking twenty years ahead, ten years ahead even, and really planning out our city, perhaps our newly formed EDAC might have been able to weigh in on, on the, on the property that is the former sheriff's station and current Sam, Samaria County, Ukepa Branch Library, and, and really weigh in on that economic development capable, sorry, opportunity for the parcel that is our current library. So second follow-up on that, do we have, has anybody in our government assessed or evaluated the, the value of the land and the, and the building, or perhaps just the land? What is it, what does that go for if we sell it? What kind of, what kind of funds can we coop in? And maybe a, hey, we, we're going to, we're going to shutter our library for a few years altogether. It's going to go dark. Calamasa's got a nice one they're building, but perhaps we can come up with some of the money. I don't know. I don't know what the value of that land is. Is it, does it get us closer? And if it doesn't, then maybe we abandon that idea and move forward to some of my follow-up points here in a moment.
Certainly. So there's a lot there. There would be a lot to unpack. So the library property, which is owned by the city, sits in between two other parcels that are also owned by the city. On the hard corner there of Ukepa Boulevard to Fifth Street, the building that used to be the incubator center, that's owned by the city, and the city's been actively marketing that property for some time. We do have recent appraisals on, on that property. I don't believe we have a recent appraisal on the library parcel by itself, but we could probably get pretty close by looking at the appraisal of the property next door. On the other side of the library, the city owns that property as well. And so the thought was, you know, if, if the new, if a new library is built, we would demolish the existing old library building, and we would have three sizable parcels next to each other, and we could end up with a very nice project there on a very key intersection in the city. So is it possible that through that deal, whatever that ends up looking like, that we could bring in a substantial amount of money that could then be applied to a project such as a new library? Yes, it is. Certainly not in time for, to meet the requirements of this particular state grant.
So, and then forgive my ignorance, I'm, I mean, maybe we invite the, I mean, I know he's a busy man, and perhaps he won't even show up, but maybe the state librarian needs to come down here and see. We're, we're at the finish line. We are so close. I don't know the abilities that this, this man has or this woman has. Forgive me, I don't even know who this person is for our state librarian, but we, we need more time. I think if we were to sell that land, recognizing that, I think there is substantial opportunity for economic development at the development of that, the corner, the library, and all the way out to the bluff. If we can get closer to that, I'm not, what I'm saying is I'm, I'm not ready to abandon this project yet. I would love to try to find a ways to, you know, hey, maybe that county librarian or the state librarian who wants to go to Soobing and have a wine and talk like we were able to do with some of our other partners and really just talk it out, or go to the White Rabbit and kind of understand, get a feel for, we're not just a dot on a map from your lofty perch in Sacramento. This community wants a library, we need a library, and we're, we're fighting for it. To your, to your point, Joe, staff has, I mean, you guys have worked your tail off finding money, and I have to, I have to, we have to recognize that the county has been phenomenal in coming to the table. Supervisor Rao, I mean, came out with that, with her discretionary funding to help us there, and the tribe, working with the chairwoman over there, Lynn, the entire tribal council has been supportive of truly recommitting themselves to being involved in our community development, specifically cultural development and education on what Ukepa is. It's, it's, it means so much more in the history of our, of our green valley is, is more than just, you know, a place that is, exists next to an apple orchard community. We're, we're very much involved with that tribe, more than we even know it at this point. And it seems, I mean, we've come so far and we're so close. And I say so close because in the grand scheme of things, the year or two it may take to get there, it's nothing. I've been on the council for four years, and it seems like a blink of an eye. And if there's an opportunity, and I'm certain staff has already tried to do this, but can we, can we keep on trying, especially to bring some, maybe bring somebody from Sacramento down here, invite them and say, come, come take a look, we're so close. Moreover, on that, while we try to find a way to, to, you know, fight for this and claw with everything we have to keep this going, Calamasa's well underway on their library. We are a beautiful green valley that exists by that imaginary line that runs up that horrible street that needs to still get a lot of renovation done. But in the interim, what can we do to maybe collaborate with them to give our, our residents on this side of that, of that line, a little more support on their library while we try to, I mean, I mean, I'm not suggesting we start writing a blank check, but what can we do to collaborate with them and make that a joint use library until such time as we're able to truly maybe fight for this? I'm just not, I'm not really ready to give up on that. And finally, I'm not, I'm not advocating that we, you know, entertain this, taking some of these funds from the state and crossing that county line, because I know in the state's eyes, that county line is a very real line, tangible line that doesn't get crossed. However, it may be something we can do in, in the ways of developing some kind of relationship with that library to help our residents while we potentially, if there's an opportunity for it, shutter this library altogether for a few years. Again, it sounds, I know, I know doing so is going to be to the detriment of our kids and of people who use our library, but if we can fight a little bit longer, if there's an opportunity, maybe closing the library for a year or two while we, while we sell it, while we try to recoup funds of existing real estate that the city owns. I just, I, I feel like this conversation would be had really well if there was somebody from Sacramento that had seen that we're, we're doing everything we can, we're fighting for it. It's not like we're sitting on this grant for several years going, huh, huh, nothing. I mean, we've really been, we, you have been working your guys' tail off to get there. So without going on too much more rambling, I, I just, that followed with, I'm not sure if this Jim Favreau guy, he seems optimistic. I'm not sure if you saw the public comment that was submitted to council. Sounds like he's somehow involved in the, in the RFP, RFQ process. If I'm reading correctly, I think he's involved somehow in the project, and certainly he would want us to continue. I think he stands, stands to gain financially if we do. So I'm not too, putting too much emphasis on that, but he seems to think there's an opportunity forward with our current budget and timeframe. I will concede the city staff's expertise if that's, if that's all together, not, not possible, but for what it's worth, I'll do, I mean, what can we do to gain more attention from, from the people who actually listen to us in Sacramento? I know our, our state senator, Atua Bog, if there's, I mean, what can we do? Let's start making noise. Let's show them that we're fighting with like tooth and nail for this project, and we'll do whatever it takes to keep it going, bag, bar on steel, and really request more extensions because we're so close.
It can't hurt to ask. I think there's two components. There's time, you know, up to this point, state library has been unwilling to, and commit to an extension of any amount of time, even six months. I think asking for years would be probably rejected outright, but it can't hurt to ask. But even if we did get it, we would be asking for more time to sell off city property and raise money that way. It would take a commitment from this council that that's how you'd want to use those proceeds in a town that has an awful lot of infrastructure needs, right? So I guess one of my hesitations, this whole thing was born out of a previous strategy of applying for every grant that was out there. A need for a library was not at the top of the city's priority list, right? It's something that would be fantastic, something that a lot of people in this community would like to see, but a nine million dollar grant was awarded, and now the city had to scramble to figure out where the rest of the money was going to come from, right? So we can ask for more time. If, if the answer is no, then I guess we don't have to go any further. But if there, if there is more time, then we would need direction from this council. Yep, go try to sell off these properties, and we're going to use that, that revenue for this library, and that's more important than this other list of a lot of other infrastructure needs that we have.
Anything else? Councilman Miller?
I think we asked for the time, you know, and then we go back and, you know, I think that we can, you know, the design and build, I think that that's about fifteen, twenty percent higher budget than if we went straight without a design and build. Talking to other different contractors out there and, and different developers and stuff, I think that that's a fifteen to twenty percent increase in the building of it and stuff. You guys can check that out yourself. But there's, if we can ask for more time and start tightening up certain things and stuff, maybe we can get there, so.
Councilman Miller?
Well, I think we're just talking to staff right now about the recommendation. Don't we have some public comment on this? I'd like to hear from the public.
We do have several comments on this side.
And then we can get back into discussion. Would that be okay? I'd like to hear what the public says.
That's fine.
So we are going to start with Bianca Nunez, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Bianca Nunez. I'm with Erickson Hall Construction. We actually partnered with Johnson Favreau for the submission of our proposal. With that, we were just a little surprised with the agenda, with the information that came out. This is all very informative, so thank you for putting that together. On our end, you know, we just wanted to share, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, all ten submissions, is that we're very excited for your community, and we're here to support. Part of us wanted to proceed with the interview process, for example, whether it was our firm selected or someone else, just because that allows for conversation, kind of like you mentioned, like, hey, we spoke to some of our contractors, and this is what they're saying regarding design build versus progressive design build versus the traditional. So it's just kind of, again, we were hoping to at least continue those conversations through the interview process so we can provide more insight to the, to the city. So with that being said, we're here for you, whatever you guys need. I think we're all very excited for your community, and as far personally, I grew up going to the library myself, being the eldest of four. It was just a safe place. And so having that for you guys, I think when it's needed, I think it's, it's great. So I hope you guys continue to push, whether it takes a couple of years or longer or less, you know, yeah, I hope that, that comes to you for your city. Yeah, thank you.
She says you're here for whatever we need? We need seven million dollars.
Right, perfect.
All right. Write us that check, and we'll be good to go.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mark Westwood.
I think I should have my name on this podium because I speak too much. I apologize. You know, as far as the library is concerned, we really need to consider what is the purpose of our city. Our, our city is to serve the community in many different ways. We serve the community with safety and all the different aspects of safety. We serve the community in health, and we try and do that. We also serve the community in education. As council member Miller knows, because he was on the school board, you know, that's important for our city. The library has, it serves our children and also serves our elderly, sometimes not as much for the people in between because they use their computers and phones and online stuff. During COVID, it was a difficult time. The children didn't get the education they needed, they didn't get the time, and to try and get them back into the groove, we needed more space in the library, which we didn't have. So we couldn't have as large of classes and educational and promotions to push our children forward that we needed to do for the city. And I, I think that's an important aspect to consider is our purpose. The budget is problematic. And I I I think that's an important aspect to consider i- is our purpose. Um the budget is a problematic thing. Now, um there was a mention of priorities. You know, as time goes, usually cost never goes down. I mean, you you're in the building, you might have built your own home, whatever, it always goes up. But we put other priorities ahead of the library. The library has been on the docket for a long time. We put the priorities of entertainment and the five winds and how we could expand it. We put the priorities of the wine country, and and we just, we can go down the list of the priority of things, but we never, as far as I can see, uh I know city staff has done a lot of work, they've gotten some money, but if we had gotten their priority and set and started the building earlier when the cost was less, you know, we might have made some headway. That being said, I would have to agree with council member Beaver. I I I think we need to do what we can to retrieve this project for the sake of our kids and our elderly. And so I I I hope that um we as a city, city council, city staff can do something to help revive this particular project. Thank you.
Mark Westwood, followed by Martha Glubka.
Like Sesame Street, the word of the night is collaborate. And I know, you you took all my talking points, uh council member, and Councilman Venable, I'm depending on you. And I know, Councilman Beaver, you're not gonna give up on this. You know, why should Ucaipa, you know, accept less? We've got the town next door doing it. I just was in a beautiful new library in Menifee. And to have a twenty-two million dollar library right next door to Ucaipa High School, I know that the Board of Education member, the former Board of Education member, Bob Miller, you love libraries, right? So we can do this. Let's build this library, and let's let, look at our limitations. We don't have to make this decision tonight. We discussed it last in November in front of you all, and some of you weren't here. And, you know, it's time to collaborate, it's time to discuss. We don't have to do this tonight. Let's table this. Let's bring it back. Let's organize. Let's say we can. Because tonight, we don't want to say we failed, because that's what we're doing. We're failing. Let's not fail. We're the city of Ucaipa, right? We're proud. We can do this. And it is such a great thing to educate our children, to educate our seniors. Library is your core of our community and our culture. Our library, I I agree with our our city administrator, uh we can't put a lot of money into that library and expand it. It's too small, it's made of cinder blocks. You know, it's it's it comes up woefully short. We need a good library in Ucaipa, and it's a direct benefit to all of our citizens. And and we need to do that. You know, I'm not placing the blame on anybody or else, but I like the idea of maybe, you know, Cala Mesa moved their library into the Bank of America, old Bank of America building. We got a Citibank building. I'm sorry about the the Haunted Mansion, but we might do that, sell that land off, be creative. That's what we need to do. We we can't just simply fail tonight. You know, we we can do this, and and uh we can't be shortsighted, and 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 I know it, it it takes a lot of courage, it takes a lot of fortitude. But the one last thing I want to say is, uh with all respect to Mr. White here, he speaks from zero. He speaks from, this is what we have now, and this is what we have now. But we can project in the future. Just look at the cost of eggs, right? The prices of things have gone up. That means tax increment is gonna go up. Measure S passed, correct, right? So you're gonna get that coming in too, and you can project in the future with creative financing. You can place it in subsequent A, B, C, and D year. You can break that up. You you can finance, you can find some more people, and an amazing amount of things happen in a short amount of time if the right people are working on it. And the right people have been working on it. I want to thank those city staff members who worked hard, who did get this together. And, you know, we were so close to the finish line. Let's not stop now. Thank you very much. I hope that Councilman Miller, I hope that Mayor Beaver, you know, Mr. Venable, and uh our great council member over here will all vote for it, and and I'm hoping you will too. Mrs. Wusley, I'm in your district. Thank you.
Our last comment is Martha Glubka.
Hello again, these sharp-looking people up there. Okay, um I'm gonna have to go off the cuff, because I didn't know this was being brought to council. First of all, I'm gonna say, education is so important for our kids. They're our future. They're gonna be the ones possibly sitting up here in, you know, ten, fifteen years, and we want them educated. There's a plethora of real estate agents, even in this room as I speak, that could look at that property. Let's see what we could get. We've gotta think outside the box on this, because I found out, I looked around for Amy Simmons, didn't see her, and this really was her baby. And she's out of town, and it kind of got slipped in, and I am pretty sure she would have maybe changed her plans to be here, because we just, we can't give up on this. And I really think you need to table it. We've, there's creative financing. There's gotta be a way. I mean, last year alone, the city loaned four million for the Coiman property. What? Stuff like that is wasted. In my opinion, and it may not be yours, but and that's fine, but investing in our kids, I hope council will really take that into consideration. I I just, that's so important. And I don't know, you know, looking at that property, why was that important? What value did it give to the city, really? Please, please, please think about it. There's got to be a way to do this. Um Phil had said that we're gonna have a balanced budget. Well, that's great. Is there not a fund you can borrow it from? There's got to be a way to make this happen for our kids. And I also wanted to say something on a side note. Our churches are so important in this community, and I'm so glad that you guys made the right decision tonight. They do a public service that goes beyond speaking. Getting our kids educated and getting them with the right moral compass is what keeps Ucaipa the city we want it to be. So I would just ask you guys to really think this out. I guess that's it. I can't think when I don't have something written, but I thank you guys. It's your decision to make. I know that. So make the right decision, though.
We have no further comments.
Okay, I think we left off with you. Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Um the only question, I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if it was for me or Joe. Wh- where we based the the initial cost estimate to build it was with a company that actually didn't bid on the project, which I found interesting. Do we know why that happened?
We did have some communication with a a firm who provides these kind of services, and their concern was the schedule. The the, not the schedule, but the the grant funding deadline. Um I I I don't know for sure if that's why they did not submit a a response, but they did mention that that was their concern.
I mean, twenty twenty-six is tight. Uh I thought that might be what it was. Um, okay. And then we were talking about the property. There is a difference between institutional property and real property, right? I mean, like, school district had institutional property, the value's different. All right, right, Chris? Or Mr. Ma'am?
Correct, yeah. Property value is uh impacted heavily by the the use associated with that property. If we were to sell that property, just like we're looking to sell the uh the incubator center property, we would probably rezone it before selling it, uh to to get the higher value.
Thank you. And Mr. White, I appreciate what you'd said about reserves. Uh we have to be really careful about ever talking about dipping into reserves. Um we have agreed as part of our goals uh for our council is not only our strategic plan, but it's a financial strategic plan, which is key to the whole thing. And um our reserves have to be strong, and we have to be very careful with them. So I appreciate your honesty on that. Uh that is your job as a finance director to remind us of that once in a while. Um but I appreciate you doing that. I know the staff's worked hard on this project. I've been kind of following it from the sidelines for the last few years. You know, there's, and I agree with council member Beaver, uh it's like we're on the twenty-yard line, and we're we're gonna almost gonna score, but it's just there seems to be a roadblock after a roadblock, when so much work's been done by our staff and our community that want to do something about this. So uh, you know, I came in here thinking, uh, I'll be honest with you, it was a financial decision clearly for me. There, we can't move forward with the uh the information that we've been presented, but there's also the human side of this. And, you know, there's, the old word is community, and part of community is the word unity. So we have to figure out this together of what we can do, because we are pretty close. And I've changed my mind in the last twenty minutes about how I feel about it, because um, you know, if we're that close, and we don't look at maybe some other option, because I had asked the city manager also, could we re-outfit it? Is there some way we could maybe bundle it with a senior project or something? Some need to bundle that in a different way and seek some other monies. We had talked about that. Because of the condition of that building, it hard, the retrofit, it probably wouldn't work out. Cala Mesa, their their library's very small compared to what we're trying to do. I, you know, we had the property over there at the school district, and and it looked like it was gonna be a good fit. And it's a touchy subject, you know, uh because there is gonna be very strong feelings about a library. And I remember that from history many years ago, when we had to close them during the economic crisis, and the phone calls I got were unbelievable from uh many of the community members, even in fact from Washington DC. But um, you know, there is some community issue to that. Um so uh we got a tough decision to make. Now, where we go with that, I don't know. I just wanted to express that. I thought different about it as we got talking. Yes, we're gonna take care of our reserves, and we're gonna have a balanced budget, number one. But we also have this c- community unity side of this piece. We have to think about that somehow. I mean, they're, you know, listen to some of the comments that we heard. And and look what's happened over the last few years on this. And we're we're close, man, but we're not maybe the thirty-yard line, not quite the twenty. But, you know, I don't know. Uh there's been a lot of politics behind it, I'm sure. And then we have our partners that we've reached out to that have helped us in in, you know, how we, that relationship's been built, so we have to be very careful about that. Um holistically, I think. That that's all I gotta say about that.
Councilman Wusley?
When I first filed uh to run for this office, uh we had a meeting with the city, and one of the first things the manager told us was, one of the hard decisions you're gonna have to make this year is in regards to the library. Now, that was the first time I'd heard about it. So during my campaigning, I asked a lot of questions of the people I talked to in my district and also anybody else I ran into. And I discovered some things. A lot of people didn't know about the project. I talked to a lot of families uh with children in either public school, charter school, or homeschooling. And I asked them, how much do your uh children use the library? And every response I got was, they don't. They get all of their resources from the school year-round. So that type of um families aren't utilizing the library. Older people I've talked to, um I know there are old pe- older people that um go to the library and use it. I know there's, what is it, friends of the library group that help there. I have visited the library. I've sat down with the current um head librarian there. I've talked to staff. The one time that I went in, uh the first time, I talked to both the head librarian and a staff person, and I asked him, how many um teenagers do you have come in? And the comment was, we don't see teenagers. And that makes sense, because we know when teenagers leave school, we know what they're doing. They're gonna go out on their phone, do their things. And then um the more we talked, they basically made the comment, not the head librarian and another staff person, this is a children's library. And I did go in again and ask how many people uh come to the library on a daily basis. And they said they have a clicker, and it averages maybe two hundred plus a day. So I asked the question, approximately how many of that number is children? And the response I got back is about forty percent. So um libraries aren't the same use that they used to be. Uh you know, growing up, um living in a small community, the library was was a big deal to get to go to the library and check out books and and go in and everything, but we didn't go in and hang around. They didn't have children's programs. You went in, you checked out your books, you brought them back. As you got older and needed to do research, because the schools at that time didn't have the facilities they have now as far as libraries, you went to the library. You looked up uh resources if you needed to uh do projects. What was it, microfilming or something that you could look up on if you wanted to look up old newspaper uh articles or anything? You know, it was used in that manner. It was a place to go in where it's quiet and where you studied and had a purpose to be there. It was not a place for children to congregate for programs at that time. Now, I understand here that it is a big um event for the children to come in, younger children, not the older ones. We've talked about the possibility, or we know that costs are gonna go up. It's not gonna get cheaper. And uh I like the idea of working with Cala Mesa, you know. Uh they're gonna have new facilities, uh probably newer books and and different programs and things, and leave this library right now as a children's place for childrens to congregate. I just don't see that there's a reasonable answer to move forward, to keep pursuing it. Because I just, we we're gonna lose the grant. I just don't see a way how this can come to be a completed project.
Can I, can I chime back in, sir? Can I have a go back? As we're sitting here talking about this, it dawned on me. Very little in my adult life have I really cared a whole lot what the state of California thought. Don't jive with them very often anyways. So the fact that they're putting a ridiculous timeframe in my mind on us, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. I don't need the state of California. I don't need that big government who gives millions to stuff that I wouldn't support anyways. But then what's the question about giving us time? We'll spend all money, but we're not gonna give you more time. Hmm, I don't care. I don't care anymore. Take back the nine million dollars, so be it. I don't need, Ucaipa, we will do just fine on our own. We always have, we always will. Ucaipa will come together. So what I see, and again, I'm speaking from a place where I don't know if our partners will continue supporting this absent a nine million dollar state grant. However, should we find a way to bolster them, we've done phased projects before. We've, we've done it. I've seen it where we go, okay, we're gonna do the building, we're gonna do this project in phases. We're gonna budget for it. We're gonna count this. It may take us ten years to get there, but by God, we will have a new library. And it means the first phase is only gonna be nine million dollars from what we got from our partners and what we got from us. And then maybe in a few more years, when we have a new healthy E dot committee helping us build a uh healthy economic development, and we maybe put, we use Mr. Westwood's suggestion of putting the library in the Citibank. We don't have a scary night over there anymore, but now we can truly sell off this property that has been a surplus. We've declared it a surplus property like four years, like three years ago. Find some more monies there, and then we can continue. Maybe there's, maybe there's another grant down the road from some other place. And we do this in, we do this in phases. And it may take us years. And you're right, uh Councilman W- Wusley, it's, the prices are gonna go up. You're right. But to that point, we're gonna attract more economic development. We're gonna attract more sales tax revenue. That two percent this year is not gonna be the same two percent, or I'm sorry, one percent next year. It'll be, it'll it'll compound year over year as we responsibly grow and attract more economic development. So you gave us the nine million dollars, uh Mr. Newsom. We're not giving it back until you take it from us. I'm not ready to throw in the towel. We'll fight until the last referee throws, says we're done fighting. But I I think there's an opportunity for us to maybe examine other alternatives without the state. They wanna partner with us and give us more time so that we can be successful as a community? Fine. We'll do it without you, because we're Ucaipa, and we can. We don't need you. We already have nine million dollars set aside if we can convince our partners to continue going through this process with us. And start the process and take it back, we'll figure it out. But um I I um can contribute my uh success in my regional promotional exam last year to our Ucaipa branch library, giving me a quiet place to study. So it is used by more than just children. I know that to be true. And I think it's a benefit to our community. Too many people use it. Um two hundred people a day is not a a small number in my mind. Um, two hundred people a day is not, uh, a small number in my mind.
City manager, something that came to my mind, and I'm sure that your staff's probably already looked into something like this, but maybe not. Have we looked at a form of sponsorship from companies? So let's say ESRI, Sorenson, somehow they, granted, they're probably not got millions to throw in it, but some sort of financial backing and to go towards the construction of the library that if their involvement, you know, kind of like you did a sponsorship for an event or something, they get to name a conference room, they get to name a wing of the library or something of that nature. Has, have we looked at any of those possibilities and them or beyond?
We have, um, and certainly that's possible. But we're, we're not going to get, you know, five to ten million dollars that way, you know? Um, you know, u- usually it would be, you know, a very large donation, a very large donation would be one million dollars, um, which is what we saw from Sam and Will Band of Mission Indians. Um, and we just can't get to ten million dollars, you know, fifty thousand dollars at a time.
So does, um, any member of the council have a?
Mayor, may I step in real quick and just add a couple of pieces of information? First, I do want to give credit to the state library's, um, grant coordinator. Although they have not entertained a grant, a, a time extension, um, i- it's not as if they've been super hard lying about it. They've just said, we're not entertaining it, we're not entertaining it. When I called them to tell them that we were going this route, they've said that they were getting ready to close their next phase of the grant application period or whatever. And she, and the grant coordinator did indicate that they would be open to an, a request. So the question is, what is their appetite for the duration? Um, so I do want to be fair to, to the state that they are now more open to it. Uh, also, staff will do whatever you direct us to do. We'll, we'll make the other hoops. When it comes to the point where you give us direction, we do have a project agreement in place with our partners. So if it includes changing from design build to design bid build, that is in the agreement. We would have to renegotiate with our partners. And, um, if we change site locations or there, there's various things that may necessitate us going back to our project partners, which would then give them an opportunity to decide if they're on board with whatever change we, we make. So I just want to make sure you have those in the back of your mind is that it's not that there's, the grant extension is off the table. It's more likely, how much time are they willing to give us and under what conditions? So if we came to them with a very solid plan, they're more likely to give us more time. But if we go to them and say, we're scrapping the plan and we're starting from scratch, I don't know how that response would be. So I just want to color, color in that, that we have both those considerations. We'll likely get some time, um, but we also have to renegotiate, uh, negotiate our agreement. And if we start from scratch, that might affect how much time the state gives us.
I agree with some of my council members that, you know, it, uh, we're close to that. I don't want to just abandon it, but the same token, we have financial responsibilities, things that we got to look at and, um, I've had a few, a little bit of feedback here and there from people and they're concerned about our financial standing and, and spending the money on this right now is not something that I think that we should be, be doing. Granted, I do think it's an important aspect of our community to have a library and it probably needs to be, well, it needs to be updated and brought up to more modern standards and times, but, um, even from our last meeting when we talked about this, I wasn't even sure, I'm not a construction person, but, uh, just the timeframe and, on the money and everything, I just didn't see how that was even possible, could even hit it. Um, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to be realistic. I don't, I don't see how that we can, as it stands, do it. Um, and I agree with Councilman Beaver that, you know, staff's done a phenomenal job at looking at all different opportunities. Um, I don't want this to be a project that we keep pushing through and then years down the road, because we kept pushing it through. It's just a headache that just never goes away and it's just kind of bad for generations to come because we just forced something that wasn't quite right yet. Um, I don't know. I, does any member of the council have a, a motion either to accept the report as presented or a alternative motion?
So given that Mr. Perdido just, I didn't, if I missed it, I apologize, but I was under the impression that there was not a appetite for, uh, extending. Okay? So let's formulate a plan. Let's go to them with a plan. And it may be a two-year plan. It may be more like, let's have a plan. Let's plan it. We've, we've gotten this far, um, and the prices will go up. I, I agree with that. Um, but if they're willing to listen to us talk about, hey, we have, we have a plan in place, we have stepping stones for us to get to, we have measurable goals we can achieve in that time, you know, maybe vacating the current library, figuring out a way to sell the property, whatever the case may be, um, why not? It's, I, I'm sorry, I know it's staff work. And it's, we, uh, we, we have staff to do that work. And then I think, uh, again, I don't, I don't want to quit. If they ring the bell and say, we're done, we're done, but let's keep on trying. Um, i- if at the end of the day, we, we get to the line where we, okay, the money's coming back to the state. Man, we went down swinging and we were trying every opportunity to get extensions, to find creative, innovative ways to get there. And if that, if at that point we find ourselves saying, you know what, maybe in that, in two years from now, staff comes to council and says, hey, our 2027 goals are, you know, strategic planning for a library and, 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 and saving. Let's, uh, at what point do we find ourselves with revenue to fund it exclusively by the city, uh, City of Ucaipa if, if need be? Um, but I don't think we're going to lose partnership. I think there still will be people out there, entities. I know, in speaking with the tribal council, they are supportive of continuing collaboration with the City of Ucaipa for this type of building, an education building where they can help, um, teach the history of the tribe in, in the valley. So, you know, I just let them take it from us before we just give it to them. Let's keep on working.
You know, I talked to Tim O'Connell, Captain Tim O'Connell from Cala Mesa and he, chief?
Chief Tim O'Connell.
Jeff, chief, sorry. Sorry, Tim, if you're watching. And, um, he got that letter truck that I really wanted to get for Ucaipa and stuff. And he went to the developers and stuff and he didn't, he kind of pushed the issue and, and got the money. So, you know, maybe we can talk to him or see how he did certain things to get extra money coming in and stuff. I mean, just to exhaust every avenue that we can to get this for our kids, you know, because they're going to be making decisions for us and we're, and I hope they put me in something more than bingo because I, I don't want to be playing bingo my whole life. Maybe shuffleboard too and stuff, but, you know, if we can exhaust everything that we can, you know, and if I need to reach out to, uh, chief, you know, to see if he can help us out, whatever it takes. So I make a mo- motion that we push this and, and, uh, try to get our heads wrapped around it and stuff and, and try to move forward and see if we can get the extension.
Second.
Do you have a timeframe, timeframe on that? You want to bring it back?
What is the thing, when do we get the money better?
Well, uh, per the terms of the, the grant, the facility is supposed to be completed and operational by March of next year. So we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to need a significant extension, but, uh, we can certainly do that. We, we can certainly go to the state and say, listen, here, here's where we are. You know, we're going to need an extension in probably a couple of years.
How, how long would it take staff to formulate a strategy, present it to the state library and request the, the, the extension?
Depends a lot on what our partners say. I, 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 I hear what, I hear what, what you're saying. So, so let me see, I know there's a motion on, on the floor already. Let me suggest that, um, you do give us a chance to go back, um, after hearing the conversation today. Uh, let's go back to our partners, uh, let's go have, meet with the, with the county, um, and see what their appetite is. In the meantime, right away, we'll put in, uh, a request to the state, uh, for an extension. We'll let them know, we'll be very transparent with them, let them know where we are. Um, initially, we need a little bit more time to put, um, a, a plan together. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll see how creative we can get here.
When would you like to bring this back to us, Mr. City Manager? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that was your line.
I was going to ask if you, if we had a timeframe, so, um, that.
Uh, well, let me, uh, let me ask Mr. Perdido, uh, based on his interactions, uh, with the state library, what, what he would recommend?
I think, I think a month is reasonable to have some formulation of a strategy and initial response from the state.
Can you reach out to, uh, Chief O'Connell?
I'm sorry, can you reach out to Chief O'Connell?
Absolutely.
And see if he can give us any kind of help on that, that situation too? Because we have a lot more development coming here to Ucaipa. And so they need to pony up, so.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Miller, you had something else?
Yeah, I just really directing this to city manager and his staff. The recommenda- recommendation financially solid. It is the recommendation you have to give us, clearly. Uh, you know, the ten million's a heavy lift, like you said, Chris, but, um, I agree with what our colleagues are saying. Um, I think at this point, we, we have to try something else. Uh, let's try to think a little outside the box a little bit. But for the staff, that was the right recommendation to give us. But we get to make that decision a little bit. And this is government in action, guys. This is what's happening. So thank you for your hard work, Joe. I know you're pretty good at gift to gab. So I know you'll do your very best, and I mean that as a compliment. Uh, you will do your very best to work with the folks in Sacramento to see what you can do. I have faith that you can probably get a successful outcome if we really do this right. So, uh, you know, do your best work if you can. And let's see, I, I think the city manager has felt what we've said tonight. Um, you know, this is government. And, uh, but for your staff, for me and everybody that's had to deal with the bids, i- the work is good. I want you to know that, okay?
All right, so we have a first and a second on the floor for, uh, bringing this back in thirty days to see what our plan and options are. You guys ready?
Yo, thirty days.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, might I suggest instead of, um, thirty days that, that we say, uh, the, uh, first meeting in March?
First meeting in March?
Yes.
Does that work with your motion and your second?
Yep.
All right. So bring the, back the first meeting in March. We got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm conflicted on this vote because I really do feel like that we have other issues that are more important. And I just don't know that it, by putting it off, if it's going to really accomplish anything. I'm, I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay. All right. That brings us to council member reports. We'll start to my right, Councilman Beaver. Anything to report?
Come back to me, I'll be back.
Venable?
Love Ucaipa. It's coming up, so we need to get out there and, and, uh, give some, some support. Um, you have meetings every, once a month? Now, is it open to the public to where they can come and, and talk to you guys about things? Or are you guys going to have a?
It hasn't been up to this point, but we could certainly add a public meeting.
Yeah, that'd be nice. You know, just to s- you know, let the community know. I know all your churches, you guys are, are letting everybody know at the churches and stuff like that as well. So, you know, whatever you can do, maybe meet with, you know, the Ucaipa, um, Facebook page and, and everybody and stuff, and maybe we can get this out there. So, and we have, uh, the run too. We have a, Dr. Wong? When is the run?
April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth, so come out and join us.
And it's sponsored by Roadfire, a healthy title, and Crafton Hills College.
All right.
Justin, did you have anything else?
I do. Um, at our last meeting, I requested staff prepare a proclamation, uh, honoring Holocaust Remembrance Day. I'm going to read it real quick. It's, uh, whereas January twenty-seventh marks International Holocaust Remembrance Day, dedicated to the memory of over six million Jewish victims of the Holocaust, including millions of others. And whereas the Holocaust remains one of the most horrific atrocities in human history, and it is imperative to honor victims, acknowledge the pain and suffering of survivors, and ensure future generations are educated about the dangers of hate, uh, hatred, to prevent such horror from occurring again. And whereas International Holocaust Remembrance Day condemns all forms of religious intolerance, incitement, harassment, or violence against persons or communities based on ethnic origin or religious belief throughout the world. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the City View, City Council of the City of Ucaipa, California do hereby recognize January twenty-seventh as Holocaust Remembrance Day in memory of the many victims of the Holocaust. The city seal is affixed and Mayor John Thorpe's counsel has been signed too. Um, certainly with the temperature of the globe, as previously stated on January twenty-seventh, our last meeting, it is critically important that we remember, um, not only Holocaust Remembrance Day and the atrocities that took place, but truly the, um, the anniversary of the end of one of the deadliest conflicts, um, in human history. Um, and so thank you for signing this, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would ask that city staff work with the groups that were reaching out to ask us to do this so that this can be, um, sent to join all the other proclamations from around the region to, uh, recognize our, our efforts here in the City of Ucaipa, to not forget and to remember the, uh, the atrocities of the Holocaust. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Justin. Yeah, you know, I, our, our council member comments, I'd, I do like to comment about the great work that's done by our employees. And, uh, today, this week I'd like to highlight Diana Serrano, one of our code enforcement experts. Um, her experience in, in this city's been wonderful. She's assigned to our solutions-oriented policing team, uh, under the direction of the police department. Uh, she's been an invaluable asset to our SOP team. Diane's relied upon to investigate the most complex cases that code enforcement has and seems to solve most of them with ease. Great investigator. Diane's ability to think outside the box and find unique solutions is unique pro- unique problems is her greatest asset. She can figure it out. Uh, this is a skill that's not common and often people can have and, and she has that skill set. Another part of Diana's position, which is, uh, a large departure from noble code enforcement, is she is the homeless liaison. And, you know, we're, we're dealing with them issues in the community. And as a founding member of the, uh, the SOP team, Diana and her partners have crafted and molded the team into a highly successful machine. And, uh, uh, city manager, a man knows about that. We've had some successes with that program. So in a short amount of time, they've established the results, so they're very impressive. Um, and they truly go out of their way to just do a great job. And just one of our employees that just continued to do a good job day in and day out. So I just want to thank Diana Serrano for the great, great job they do on the front lines every day. And, uh, I just want to thank her. And I had one more thing if you don't mind. There was this beautiful little student, a little ten-year-old, uh, uh, Giselle Gloss that, uh, passed away recently and we had her funeral Thursday. She was a fourth grade student at Valley Elementary. Uh, she had a form of a brain tumor, um, and, uh, she had a beautiful, uh, ceremony at Mountain View, uh, mortuary this Thursday. And it was neat to see the community came out. There were teachers and staff and community members, district, uh, school district folks there, principals. And, uh, for this beautiful ten-year-old that just fought the whole way and unfortunately didn't make it past, uh, ten years old. But it was neat to see the community come together and there were so many students, staff, friends, folks from our Stars Program, parents. And it shows that a community can really come together and, uh, you know, uh, it was just a tough situation with this family. Um, but it was very impactful to see the family show up for this, this beautiful young girl. So I just wanted to remember that in this meeting if you don't mind. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Woolsey?
We're doing committee reports, so it's just comments.
Business, so your comments, report.
Okay. Uh, at the SBCTA meeting last week, we approved an update to the ten-year strategic plan that prioritizes project funding. Measure I is a countrywide half-cent sales tax that goes to help fund transportation projects. It originally passed in nineteen eighty-nine and it was extended in two thousand and four in the form of Measure I through two thousand and forty. Early on, the board made the, the decision to accelerate project delivery by borrowing against future revenues. Measure I doesn't expire until two thousand and forty, but all the revenue has been programmed, meaning that we don't have any more Measure I for new projects. Board has discussed, going back to the voters, to extend the tax beyond two thousand and forty to help fund transportation improvements. Transportation Investment Plan Ad Hoc Committee gave a report and they recommended moving forward with a proposal to county voters to approve an extension of the half-cent sales tax with no ending date. And that would be probably put out in two thousand and twenty-six at the November election. New measure would also give more flexibility on how to allocate. New measure would also give more flexibility on how to allocate funds because new technology continues to evolve. It was suggested to explore a full one-cent sales tax and staff will be doing a poll on the feasibility of that. Also, some discussion about breaking up the valley subregion into east and west. And if that would happen, the west would get a greater share. I want to keep my colleagues aware of these discussions and let the community know that I'll be fighting to make sure that we get our fair share. I also had a one-on-one meeting with Executive Director Ray Wolf on Thursday where I advocated for Ucaipa's interests, including the future I-ten Wildwood Canyon Road interchange project. And then that afternoon, I was also notified that I was appointed to the SCAGS Community Economic and Human Development Committee.
Good job, thank you. I have a couple of things. So I talked to the City Manager about this earlier today. And in an effort to keep trying to figure out ways to make us a little bit more professional and, and just up our game a little bit, uh, this is not referenced to anybody in particular. But over the past term, past four years, every time we get an application for something, whether it's for committees, it's for an event, special event, sometimes the applications are different. Sometimes they're handwritten, sometimes you can read them, sometimes you can't read them. Sometimes you can't see them because the print is so fine or so faint that it doesn't come through. I would like to see that we come up with something, I don't know if we have the current technology to do it or if we're gonna have to bring it back later to have something that can do it. But I'd like to see that we have some form of a standardized forms that we use. And so that we don't have two or three different kinds of applications and that they are typed only and get rid of handwritten. And that could be done a couple of ways. One, it could be a fillable PDF. Uh, it could be done on their computer and they can send it in. We could have it on the website, we could have it on the kiosk in the lobby for those that don't have computers. I just think it would look, make us look a little bit more professional. We could then read it. And then the other thing is, maybe this is just a personal thing with me, but a- and I'm not trying to make it harder on the folks that are investing in our community. But when people wanna be considered for a committee or for a event and they leave questions blank and they don't provide any kind of explanation. If you don't feel like filling out the application, then I have a hard time putting a lot of thought into consideration of your application. Now, that's me personally, and I'll probably get criticized for that. But even if you don't have anything to say on that line, you just, you know, it doesn't apply or put something down so we know you saw it, so it's not blank. If you care enough to try to fill out application, fill the hole out in thing, in com- in complete form. If there's a way, our software or our IT guys could put something together that when it is submitted online, they are required fields, so they can't be submitted until every line is addressed or something is on that line. Uh, one of the applicants, no, I won't go there, I'll just do that one. But i- I just think it would up our game a little bit. So I don't know, you indicated, City Manager, that you think most of this might be able to be kinda done in-house.
Yes, sir. So the City Clerk's office is actually already been working on professionalizing some of those forms. So I think what you're describing, uh, would, would take that to the next step and we could certainly do that. We, we could probably do that without incurring much of any extra costs, so we can handle that administratively. We'll, we'll definitely uh, take a look at that.
Okay, I appreciate it. And it's not against uh, anybody particular, it's just I've just noticed over all the different times that we've looked at applications. Some of it you can't even read them, they're written so soft or so light that when they're photocopied or they're scanned in two or three times or whatever, you, you can't make out what they're writing, you don't know who they are, what their experience is. Uh, and then the last thing before we go to, if you have any announcements, City Manager, is that uh, earlier in closed session, related to item B on the closed session item, can we bring back at our next meeting for uh, an RFP with a thirty-day timeframe as it relates to uh, Public Employment Reference City Attorney? With that, um, do you have any announcements to make, City Manager?
I do not, thank you.
Do you have something else?
One other thing, did, were you, uh, we talked about um, the terms on the release in the commission?
Oh, yeah, and that, Councilman Venable brought it up and he can expand on it. Something that maybe we revisit with our, with our committees. When you have an election cycle for a city council, not everybody gets re-elected one time, so you're starting from square zero every time. So using that same philosophy, you normally have a portion of them, so two, one year, and then the next election year, it's gonna be three. When it comes to our committees, the appointments that are made according to those council members or the ones at large or they're appointed, we bring something back to look at the consideration for the, all the committees to be on that same type of cycle. And, and the reason being is that sometimes when we redo these nominations for the committees, sometimes they may not get anybody back on the committee that's ever been in there. And all of a sudden, it's completely new and they're all trying to figure out what's going on. And there's a, I do, I guess what I'm trying to say is it increases the learning curve. Might add a little more stability in bringing in um, what they've been working on, experience and some of the history of that committee and what they're currently trying to address. So it's something that he had brought up, and I don't know if, do you wanna elaborate on it any further?
No, I did. It just made sense to me to, if you, when you wipe a, a committee completely clean and stuff, nobody, you know, then we're scrambling to find out, you know, um, what, you know, they were, their agenda was and stuff. So I think that if you staggered um, the committee members and stuff and still had a little bit left over on each, each election, you know, they can bring, and we could keep on moving forward where we were headed instead of scrambling the first, you know, few. Because the, other than the Youth Advisory Committee and stuff, that's, I mean, we have uh, Sarah there all the time and stuff. We have different ones for me, sometimes we have Scott, sometimes we have other people and stuff. So it just made sense to me to bring this up and maybe get it on our agenda.
Absolutely, we can take a look at that. Our committees uh, did use to serve four-year terms and that, that, that changed to two-year terms a few years back. We'll have to look into the reasons why that was done, but we can certainly bring that to a future agenda. With the appointments having been made, we do have a couple of years before that, that would come up again, but, uh, so we have some time. But uh, before that happens, we'd be happy to bring, bring an item back for your consideration.
All right, thank you. With that, that brings us meeting to adjournment at current time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Sorry. Can we adjourn in the um, honor of heavenly birthday for Jimmy? His thirty-third birthday for Ms. Klobke?
Sure. Yeah, we have to close this.
Adjourn in his honor, please? When you're, when you're done, sir? If you could be so kind?
I thought you wanted to do it. Okay, so per uh, Councilmember Beaver's request, we will adjourn in his honor. And uh, we are gonna close this council meeting and the current time is eight thirty-eight. And we are gonna move into closed session because we did not finish our business in there. And uh, with that, happy birthday.